All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We're going to start off by having the Pledge of Allegiance with our local Weebloes troops. If you guys can come up to the dais, all those of you in uniform, and lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Right here, sorry. The flag is back here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Hold on, everybody, hold on. Hold on, hold on. As Council President, I have the great honor of providing to you a pin of the city of McMinnville. Feel free to wear this. Don't wear it if you're getting a uniform inspection because it's not BSA-approved. Thank you very much for coming up tonight. So, can you introduce your leaders first?
Um, this is...
This is Dad.
Okay, this is, um, Ron.
Ron.
Ron Flander. This is Callan Lyles, and this is, um, Chuck.
Very good. Well, thank you all for coming and thank you for your service to these boys. I've been introduced as Tiny Job, but you will all remember. Thank you all for coming. All right, first up on our agenda, we have time set aside for citizens to provide us with public comment about anything that you would like to talk about. There's a caveat to that. Anything that is on the agenda currently that we will be discussing tonight, we ask that you wait to talk about it as it comes up on the agenda. Anything that's a matter of litigation, which I don't believe we're at any of that right now, so that's good, so can't talk about that. Any quasi-judicial land use issues, you need to do that at the appropriate time, and during this public comment isn't the appropriate time for that. And any matters scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, you would then come back and comment at that time. So if you have anything you'd like to talk to us about that is not on that no-no list up there, you're welcome to come and talk to us. Is there anybody that would like to give comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. We have the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the July 12th Town Hall and Joint Meeting, and the October 11th, 2016 Dinner and Regular Meeting, as well as Resolution 2016-73, awarding the contract for replacement in the three-mile lane pump station, and Resolution Number 2016-74, a resolution amending the contract with Century West Engineering for Runway 422 Rehabilitation Project at the airport. I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Oh, also, there's one more. Just wanted to pull down. Resolution 2016-75, a resolution approving Task Ordinance Number One to the Personnel Service Contract for the Design of Ford Street Sidewalk Improvements in Pedestrian Safety.
I have one edit to the minutes. I believe I have one edit to the minutes because I wasn't at the meeting, but there's, on page five at the very bottom, the last two words of the paragraph, it says, "Mrs. Richards discussed the role of government regulations such as impact fees, code restrictions, growth restrictions, and exclusionary zoning." I believe that it should say inclusionary zoning, or, yeah, I should say inclusionary zoning, not exclusionary zoning.
There is a big difference.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we need to pull it off the convention to do that?
No, I think just note that amendment in the minutes, and then you can approve it as amended.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I also, I'm really embarrassed that I didn't notice this before, but my attendance at this meeting isn't noted, and I don't, is that, is it somewhere that I'm not catching it?
The July 12th meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, the October 11th meeting.
You were there.
You were there.
So we can make that amendment as well that she was there?
I'm sorry, I wish I'd seen it earlier. Oh, okay.
If she's not on the minutes, do we not have to pay her for being there?
You're right.
Okay, you can be there.
It's all about the money.
Okay, with those changes, I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I so move.
We have a motion by Councilor Menke, a second by Councilor Rudin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? The consent agenda is passed. Next up, we have a public hearing on the PERS transition liability. Marcia.
Thank you, Council President and councilors. On September 27th, the council authorized the issuance of $3.5 million in debt. The intention is to pay off the PERS transition liability that the city has, and actually, we've been working with our municipal advisor, Q. Wong Nguyen, and bond counsel to execute a transaction, actually, on October 31st. The reason for the public hearing is that when we adopted the budget in last spring, the 2016-17 budget, we didn't anticipate that we were going to be doing this retiring of the PERS debt. So the budget needs to be amended so that we can receive the loan proceeds and then pay that to PERS. And so a public hearing is required because of the $3.5 million budget amendment. It's required because that number is more than 10% of the fund.
All right, thanks, Marcia. So I will open the public hearing and invite anyone who'd like to comment on these. Of course, come on down. And again, as I'm sure you know, state your name for the record, and as you're signing in as well, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the council, Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. I support doing this. I just want to use this public hearing as an opportunity to make a comment on PERS. I sat through a similar discussion of this at the Water and Light, and they're going through the same thing. It just seems like the whole PERS issue has gotten very politicized. I mean, it probably always has been, and it's very difficult to kind of sort out what's going on. I mean, you know, over at Water and Light, they had an asset, and then they had this huge liability, $500,000 change. I mean, you know, this, I think the public, and you know, I'm a retired accountant, I mean, I kind of understand numbers, so this is really confusing. And I think what mostly we want to know is that there's light at the end of the tunnel, and you know, with all the commentary on this, I mean, I know the legislature screwed up years ago, and I know we've got, but my understanding is they've now got multiple tiers, there's other things going on. It'd be really helpful, I think, if the city started explaining to the public how much of this debt is to, you know, how much money we're spending each year has to do with the past, and how much has to do with the present. Because, you know, in a theoretical sort of way, if they have in fact fixed the problem, and I'm not sure if they have, because I can, you know, just, the information I see is always seems too, you know, sensationalized. I mean, if the problem's fixed, then over time, our liability or our pension cost should be going down, because the Tier 1 people are gradually going to retire, they're going to die off, and then there shouldn't be as much liability. I mean, I'm just being realistic here, I mean, that's the way pensions work. And so I'd just like to see the city, as we kind of move forward and do this, provide more information to the public, so we can kind of see that, you know, there's light at the end of the tunnel. And just for the record, I am retired from the Housing Authority, but we were not members of PERS, so I have nothing, you know, nothing in this myself personally, but you know, I just, I just think it'd be good to explain this a little more clearly and kind of try to cut through some of the way it's been politicized. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
And Marcia, a question that I might have is, this transitional liability kind of brought us up to a certain time period, is that correct? 2002, was it?
That's correct. Prior to 2001, each employer was rated as an individual employer. In 2001, when the state and local government rate pool was formed, allowing the cities to join into the pool, which, you know, usually is to our benefit to be part of a pool and not rated individually, the PERS actuaries determined at that time that the city had a liability, and that wouldn't be appropriate for the city's liability relating to the city's employees to be absorbed into the pool and to become the responsibility of the other employers in the pool. So the advantage of refinancing this debt, basically, is what we're doing, is that we will be decreasing the amount that we're paying PERS, and the debt service that we have on the new loan will be much less than the interest that PERS has been charging us.
And then one other piece that I just, I don't know if it's as relevant, but our liability was connected with the city and McMinnville Water and Light, and Marcia and as an audit committee, we met, and we broke out Water and Light's liability compared to ours, and so they were able to handle the financing of theirs separately from us. And when Mark was making reference, he gave the same comments with Water and Light, that was the day that Water and Light had the opportunity to take care of the same thing that we're doing right now.
That is correct. So when the $3.5 million is actually transferred to PERS on our behalf, Water and Light will be wiring their share also on October 31st. So we're coordinating that payoff of the debt with Water and Light.
Would anyone else like to provide comment? Going once, going twice. I will close the public hearing. Other action we need right now, Marcia, we have the other ordinances coming up, a resolution, so we'll address it at the time. Next up on our new business, we have an update and recommendations on the status of the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Do we have the APWA first?
Oh, sorry, I apologize, Mike. Presentation on Oregon American Public Works Association project.
Thank you, Council President and members of the council. Refer you to the information that's in your packet regarding recent project award that we received related to the Treatment Plant Expansion Project, and there is quite a bit of information in the packet related to the project and the reason for the award. I did want to highlight a few things for you this evening, because I think this is a significant achievement for our community and for our staff. Certainly, this project was a multi-year project. The design actually started in 2012. We completed construction in 2016. Extremely complex project. As you know, we have the most stringent discharge permit in the state related to our discharge to the Yamhill River. Adding on to a treatment plant is always complex, but this project was even a bit more complex as we added additional connections to the existing treatment processes to give us some redundancy and some ability to switch treatment between our treatment trains. We had significant extreme winter weather in the winter of 2015 that impacted the project. Through all of those complex connections and even the extreme weather, we kept our permit requirements, did not have a permit violation. The project certainly was a financial success. This project was, the genesis for this project was in the adopted wastewater master plan that you all approved in 2010. The financial plan and capital plan that was in that master plan anticipated a $15.6 million project. When all the work was completed and the bills paid, we were able to complete the project at $13.2 million, so that's a significant savings for the community and for our rate payers. It certainly was a sustainable project. There are design elements that were sustainable, from pavers to landscaping to electrical equipment and controls. And then I think really what caught the attention of the awards committee was the cooperation amongst all of those involved in the project significantly. It's a great team, certainly the design with CH2M and their subconsultants, the contractor, McClure &amp; Sons, and then, of course, the city team, but we had about 1.6% change orders on this project, and on a project this size and complexity, that's quite low. The city's success, I think, really starts over 25 years ago, when policymakers that came before you set a priority on wastewater in our community, and we laid the groundwork for, you know, a $60 million capital plan that you all adopted in 2010 that is self-funded without debt. So a lot of the congratulations goes to you as policymakers. It goes to our treatment plant staff, our operators, and managers at the treatment plant. I sat in on numerous partnering meetings, and the contractors come to a project like this scared of working in an existing operating plant because of what the impact to the staff can be, and oftentimes, they'll get sideways with an operating staff as they're doing construction. Heard numerous times, both from the design team and the contractor, that this staff that we have at this plant is the best that they had ever worked with. They came to solve problems, they came to assist with construction, and there was no, you know, taking my toy and going back home. They came to achieve a great project. And then, lastly, I want to recognize our project manager on this project, engineering manager, Rich Bauffer, who's here this evening, is a critical part of the success of this project. He started from the beginning and took it all the way through the end. My job was to stay out of his way and make sure he had the resources to get the work done, but I think he'll agree with you, this is sort of one of those once-in-a-career projects that certainly we're proud that the Oregon Chapter of American Public Works Association has recognized it. I did have a photo from our Public Works Convention we had a couple weeks ago. We were fortunate, starting from the right, to have National APWA President Ron Colkins join us, as well as Regional Director Jill Malarkey. Rich is there, as well as Rob from McClure &amp; Sons, and then on the left is Oregon Chapter President Delora Kerber from Woodburn. So we'll take this award and advance it to the national level. It's certainly proud to have received a state award. We'll kick it up the chain, and next year, we'll submit it for a national award and see how we fare with that, but I'd like you to join me in recognizing Rich for his project and thanking him for his great work.
Well, congratulations, that's really exciting. So, Mike, during this last winter storm we had, we didn't have any overflow, right? Anything out of the ordinary? We were able to?
A couple weeks ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this project's been completed and been online, and actually, the new treatment train is operating better than the old parts of the plant, so I've got some operators that are scrambling and trying to learn lessons from our new train to try to apply them to the old. But to answer your question, we did not have an overflow a couple weeks ago. We did have a power outage that affected some of our switchgear, but staff were on hand to make some manual switching of power sources, and we avoided an overflow, but no, things are going well.
Excellent. I heard on the, people always assume that after a big rain, it's when the rivers are really healthy, and that's not always the case, especially in the Northwest. You don't want to swim around the Willamette River in Portland when there's heavy rain, so just take great pride in that. When I heard that on the radio, I'm like, not from us, that looks good, so great job. Now we can, Heather's turn, sorry. We have an update and recommendations on the status of Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay, so good evening, Council President and councilors. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Mike and his team. That award is really significant in terms of what they've received and the other projects that they were up against, so tremendous for McMinnville. So tonight, we're going to talk about public process in planning. Public process is probably one of the most important processes that we embark upon. It's how the community can get engaged in planning and really have a community dialogue about the future of McMinnville and how we want to plan to support that. I was asked to look at the Citizen Advisory Committee. I understand this came up during a goal-setting discussion, when it was recognized that there are only three members on the Citizen Advisory Committee, which is a committee of seven, and that there's been a hard time recruiting for membership on the community. So really, why is that occurring, and why can't we get more robust participation with it? And then really, what role does it play? And is there an opportunity to look at our public involvement process and, you know, improve upon it? How can we engage and do a better job? So in Oregon land use, we work for many different goals. These goals are the hallmark of the program for Oregon, and the first goal is citizen involvement. There is an Oregon administrative rule that we have to follow in regards to this, and that means that every government body that adopts and administers a comprehensive plan must have a citizen involvement program, and it must involve the following things. We must appoint a citizen involvement committee, so by action of city council, we have to appoint a citizen involvement committee. We must also assure that there's two-way communication with citizens. So a means of providing information to citizens, and also a mean for citizens to communicate back to the decision-making bodies, which is you and the Planning Commission. There also must be an opportunity for citizen influence, so where citizens can get involved. We must provide technical information in such a way that it's available and also easy to understand, so with my team, I always talk to them about what we put out there needs to be understood by your neighbor next door. We also must provide an opportunity for citizens to respond to policymakers in terms of the decisions that they're making, and then we also must ensure there's funding for this citizen involvement program. So that's Oregon administrative rule. So McMinnville's program is kind of interesting. I had never seen it set up this way, where you have two officially appointed committees, a Citizen Advisory Committee and a Planning Commission. And this has led to some, what I believe, confusion relative to what the Citizen Advisory Committee does and what the Planning Commission does. And there's a history behind why these two committees were set up, and perhaps the duality of roles that we're in right in today. So the Citizen Advisory Committee was put together in the early '70s. The Oregon land use system was put together in the early '70s as well, so I imagine this is in response to that first goal that I just described to you. And early on in 1975, the Citizen Advisory Committee was appointed as that citizen involvement committee for the city of McMinnville. They then met over a year's time, they looked at comprehensive plan updates, and then they made a recommendation to city council in 1976 as to some updates to move forward with. Then they went into a hiatus situation, and they were reconstituted in 1981 by resolution. But interestingly, when they were reconstituted in 1981 by resolution, that resolution also appointed the Planning Commission as the official citizen involvement committee. So now you have this duality of roles, where you have two committees who are serving that Oregon land use goal of citizen involvement. And they're both looking at how do we do long-range planning in the community. So going through the history of the minutes for the Citizen Advisory Committee, they've sort of met in this, you know, in fits and spurts over the years, and the last time they met was in the year 2000. We currently have three members sitting on the committee. I have visited with all three members, and they can't recall the last time there was a meeting. Two of the members have never participated in a meeting because they've become members after the year 2000. So the question is, the intent is public involvement. So how do you have a robust public involvement process where people feel engaged, and they feel relevant, and they're participating in the long-range planning discussions? So we brought this to Planning Commission, had some dialogue with them as to, you know, how do you think we should move forward with this? Because the other charge of the Planning Commission that was brought to them with that resolution in 1981 was that they would have an annual involvement of this public involvement process. So the public involvement program, how's it working, how's it not working, how can we improve it? That's their charge. Annually, they should be having that discussion to continue to talk about citizen involvement in this community. So after talking about the Citizen Advisory Committee and the fact that it's hard to populate, it hasn't met since the year 2000, long-range planning really has been a sort of deferred discussion here for a while. There hasn't been a lot of strategic discussion in terms of, you know, what's working and not working in the zoning ordinance, because I think you have two committees who are trying to figure out their roles in regards to that. And we talked about what other communities do. So many communities have Citizen Advisory Committee structures, but they're project-specific. So for instance, and you've done that here recently in the city of McMinnville, if you think back to the Northeast Gateway District that had a Citizen Advisory Committee, that's actually a long-range planning element. Perhaps it should have gone through your standing Citizen Advisory Committee, but there was an appointed Citizen Advisory Committee project specific to that. Also with the Transportation System Plan that had a Citizen Advisory Committee, and that's a typical process for communities. If you appoint this Planning Commission as the official citizen involvement committee per the OARs, then when you're working on a long-range planning project, there's an opportunity to do sort of a call to action and say, we want to put together a Citizen Advisory Committee relative to this planning project, and those people who want to get involved, here's the process in which to get involved. And your participation will be for two years, for one year, for 18 months, we'll meet monthly, this is what we're going to talk about. So then people feel relevancy. They get involved in those pieces that they want to get involved in, they know how long they're volunteering and what their effort's going to yield. However, I would recommend to you, the way to really make a Citizen Advisory Committee operate the way it should is, what we don't do well in the planning world is we don't engage a community representation in our planning discussions. So we don't have committees who are participating in our dialogues that really represent the full breadth of the demographics in the community, because sometimes it's hard to reach out to certain sectors of that. So what I would recommend we do is if we went into this ad hoc, project-specific Citizen Advisory Committee, we do it in such a way where we write a policy about how these committees are going to be populated, and that we're going to strive to populate it in a well-represented manner of what the demographic representation here is in the city of McMinnville. So for instance, you have, or we have, our population, 17% of the population has a disability of some sort. If that is, one-fifth of the population has a disability of some sort, then there should be representation on every Citizen Advisory Committee from that accessibility community, because they're at the table, they're talking about how they're impacted by long-range planning and by implementation of those. 25% of the population is under the age of 18. We ignore our youth in our planning processes. And I can tell you, in city of Redmond, we introduced a youth, a voting youth member to every committee we had in our planning department. So they went on the Planning Commission, they also participated in all of our other standing committees and also on our Citizen Advisory Committees. What they brought to the table in terms of their insight and how they're looking at things was completely different from what we had been talking about, but very relevant for where we wanted to go, and they brought so much value that we would not have had if we hadn't made sure that we had that representation on the committee, and they want to be part of it, they just don't know how to get involved. So I would recommend that if we put a structure together for these Citizen Advisory Committees, that we also make sure that there's membership from the youth. We also have a growing retirement community here in McMinnville. About 15% of the community is 65 or over. That's also a different lifestyle, so there's an opportunity to make sure we have that representation on the Citizen Advisory Committees as well, and how are we serving them? And then also looking at liaisons from other city committees that we have. So if we're working on a particular project that impacts another city committee, we make sure we're inviting a liaison from that committee to participate in this project-specific Citizen Advisory Committee, so you have that overlap, that discussion, and you have that information going both ways. Then there's also discussion of partners. There's a lot of partners in McMinnville that all work together, MEDP, the Chamber, MDA, the school district, Friends of Yamhill County, Lynnfield College. You know, relative to the project we're working on, we would seek out those relevant partners and make sure we have that representation on the committee, too. In addition to the Citizen Advisory Committee, when you do it in this ad hoc, project-specific way... way, many communities also set up a Technical Advisory Committee, and they work in hand-in-hand with that Citizen Advisory Committee. The Technical Advisory Committee is comprised of staff experts, partner agency experts, and regional experts, and they're the ones bringing in the information. So over here, we're talking about, this is what we want to achieve in the city of McMinnville in 15 years for this program, and then a Technical Advisory Committee saying, if that's what you want to achieve, these are some of the tools to get there. So I've talked to the three members who are currently on the Citizen Advisory Committee. Two of them are here tonight. Scott may be here, because I never met him individually, but they all talked about, if we moved into an ad hoc, an ad hoc, project-specific Citizen Advisory Committee, what do you think about that? Is this something you would support? What are your anxieties associated with it? And they all said they would be supportive, because we're not having the robust public involvement process that we all want to see happen and be achieved. But there were some concerns. And the concerns would be, is the tool used in the right way for the community? So sometimes when a city looks at a project-specific CAC, they could be populating it with people relative to the agenda that the city's trying to achieve, and it's not a full breadth of representation of the community and really transparent. So I would suggest if we did move in this direction, we would amend the comprehensive plan. So right now, there's a Chapter 10 of the comprehensive plan, talks about the public involvement process, and we could amend it so that we're ensured that the policy of the city is that we're going to have this structure of representation, and this is what it's going to look like. And then we can also put an internal policy together relevant to that, too. Where I see a lot of the pros in regards to going to this project-specific work is it makes it a lot more relevant for the CAC. You have a citizen, you have a structure in which citizens can participate outside the Planning Commission and City Council in long-range planning efforts for the community. There's greater participation, there's more diversity. People are participating in things that they know and want to be a part of. It's time-specific. I know that I can volunteer for two years, I can't volunteer for four years, but I can volunteer for two for something that's really important to me. They're engaged in it, and then everyone is part of that plan and solution. So this is coming to you tonight for direction, to see how you want to move forward in terms of this structure, and then based on your direction, we'll bring, if you do want to go into a different structure than what exists today, we will start that public process for that.
Thank you very much, Heather. I'll open it up to any questions amongst the council. Anything?
What's our mandate from the state? You said it early in your presentation.
So the mandate from the state is you must have a, you must have an officially-appointed citizen involvement committee, and currently, that's the Planning Commission. And then you need to have all these different pathways for citizens to be involved and be able to participate. So usually, that's your public hearings, public meetings, opportunity to provide testimony, appeal process, those types of things.
So we're in compliance with that?
We are in compliance with the state. This is really a discussion of, is this the best public involvement program, having these two committees, because one isn't really serving the purpose that it was intended to serve, and why isn't it?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
You've been involved in these committees, I know, in Redmond. How has it worked out? Because I can see, you know, there's obviously going to be more discussion than probably some of the committees that we've served on with Citizen Advisory Committees. How does it work out with this blend of quite dissimilar participants, diversity?
Oh, I'm a huge fan of it. So, you know, I've been doing planning for, oh my God, 20-some-odd years. And it started off in sort of the traditional, okay, this is the committee that's volunteering and participating, and here's what we need to talk about, and how do we move this forward? But the committee is typically very homogeneous in age and culture. And when we started really thinking about how are we getting full representation into our committees, so we're having better dialogues, bringing all those different stakeholders to the table yielded much better results, in my mind. So it was a more complex dialogue, there were more things brought to the table, but the end result out of all of that was something we never would have thought of originally. And then it also provides engagement, and it provides support. So my role was always, the work happens at the committee level, the real work happens at the committee level, and that's where you get the informative work, and you get the product, and that's where you have the community dialogue and the buy-in. And then once it gets into this sort of, you know, going through the process, the structured process of Planning Commission and City Council, by then, it should be a pretty refined product that everyone's very happy with. And what I neglected to mention here was that you have a, McMinnville has a population of 20% of the Latino, 20% of the population is Latino. And you're, one of the things we discovered in Redmond, so Redmond, the Latino population was about 12%, but we knew we weren't reaching them because they weren't in any of our committee structures. So we engaged a study last year to figure out how to reach out to the Latino community. And your typical structure, city structure, is not the way to do it. It's, you know, it's a government hat that perhaps is not working as well in terms of having that engagement with Latino community. So by having an opportunity where you can go to the Latino community and say, we want you to participate, this is how that structure will be set up. It won't be an interview in front of City Council, an official appointment onto the committee. You're going to participate with this group of 15, 20 other people, and we're going to start talking about this, that, or the other thing, and we're going to do it in all these different places. That would engage more in that regard. And I think that's a community that we really need to engage in, McMinnville.
I find this idea fascinating. I'm very enthusiastic about it.
How will people be appointed to these committees? So for instance, with the MURAC, that was council-appointed, but you just said that it's council-appointed. So how would people be appointed?
Well, so that could be a dialogue that we could have. I think the, from what I understand, to get on a committee in city of McMinnville, people come and interview in front of you at a city council meeting. Is that correct? So that's a rather intimidating structure for a lot of people. So you can still have city council appointment, and I think the internal policy that we put together has to really describe the appointments and how it's going to happen. You can still have city council appointment, perhaps not do it in such a formal fashion in terms of the interview process here in this type of venue. And maybe it's a application process and review by a group of, you know, staff and city councillors that's recommended to city councillor or something like that. We can talk through all of that.
Okay. And then also, the group that I don't see represented on this list is a neighborhood component. So if you're looking at doing, whatever the long-range planning is typically is, you know, more area-focused, and most of the conflict that, when there is conflict here, it's because of lack of communication with the people in the vicinity where the planning or the, you know, the long-term planning is taking place. So I would just throw that out there as perhaps also something that should be included in trying to create those. And I brought this up at dinner, but I did have somebody reach out to me and said, I can't believe you guys are getting rid of the Citizens Advisory Committee. So, you know, there is a, even though I completely understand that what you're doing is actually, or proposing is much more inclusive, I just want to bring that attention to the message that goes out, so that there is not a feeling as though McMinnville is pushing away the idea of citizen involvement. And how would you address that to kind of get the ball rolling on these ad hoc committees?
Yeah, so I think it's great that someone's concerned, because that means that there's, that people really want to see the citizen involvement happen, right? And I guess what I would say is, right now, it perhaps isn't happening as robustly as it can, and this proposal is to make it more robust. And the way to ensure that there will be citizen involvement, so if the concern is, we're not going to move forward with a Citizen Advisory Committee structure at all, is sort of those comp plan amendments to the policies, and I apologize, I should have brought them in tonight so you could see how they read, but it talks about the city shall do this, blah, 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 blah. And this is how the Citizen Advisory Committee will be appointed and will operate. And the suggestion is, rather than having the standing committee that I apply for but don't actually know what I'm going to be working on, that the Citizen Advisory Committee is project-specific. That's the only structural change necessarily to this. And also, I would suggest make it broader and more representative of the community demographics.
Go ahead. I just, as kind of a, as an add-on, are there specific ways that you would recommend getting this message out to, you know, would it be, would there be a link on the McMinnville website of, you know, an I want to get involved link, and upcoming committees, or what are the specific?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. Yeah, I would love to do a more robust, figure out more robust ways to communicate to the community and what the portals are outside of the traditional, I mean, the News Register is a great product in this community, but it's not reaching everyone. So we're talking in the department quite a bit about this, how we use radio, how do we use social media, how do we use the website? Right now, we're moving forward with posting all of our projects on the website, so that people have access to the information before they go through Planning Commission and public hearings. And hopefully, if we get into a protocol where people are comfortable and understand that there's information available in the media outlets that they're used to using, that we'll get more engagement that way and be able to get the word out. If that's not working, then we're going to have to find other methods, too. One of the things we did in Redmond to get the word out to the youth is we actually went into the schools. We went into the schools, we worked with the teachers, and we gave presentations and said, we're really interested in you participating in these programs, and who's interested in doing that, and here's how you get involved.
Looks good on a college application, too, doesn't it?
Yeah, but, you know, they, they want to be part of it. They want to be part of the dialogue, and they have great ideas.
Well, I just, I'm thankful for the thoughtful process that you've gone through. I mean, it makes perfect sense to me. I can remember when we put together our citizens group for the bond, and I think that was one of the best citizens involvement groups that took us through everything we needed to, and came up with a number that we wanted to go for, and it was driven by citizens and experts that were on there. And that was fully engaged from day one until we let them go, and then it came to the council, and we knew exactly how to move forward. And I, from that perspective, these purpose-served, really engage, you know, because you know that it's going to be from here to here, and there's a commitment of time. And then, what's so nice is then as a council, is we're going forward, and then as we're going out to, in this case, to put the bond before the people, we can say, it started with the Citizens Advisory Group, and the council then saw what needed to happen, and we had great success because of the process.
Well, I think this gets even better, because of the diversity of the group will be able to hit on many other levels, too.
Larry, did you have a comment? I'll come back to you, Ellen.
No, other than how I appreciate the efforts you've gone to to put this together, to show us the different alternatives, where we're at, and where we could be, and some alternatives as to how to get there. Because, yeah, there's no sense having a Citizens Advisory Committee if it isn't going to be active and contributing anything. So I think, I think we need to have a few changes, and I appreciate the, some of the ideas that you've dropped before us, so that we can look at it.
Ellen. I think it's wonderful. It's a great presentation. I know in the past, we thought about, how do we get certain groups, demographics that you've listed on there, involved more? The youth, the seniors, the Latinos, who could be either youth, or retired, or seniors. And yet, we don't want to have a redundancy of committees, right? We've got an existing Planning Commission. Are we assuming there's going to be a planning department representative, a staff representative included on the committee?
Yeah, I mean, so...
The citizens' involvement committee.
Yes. So the Citizen Advisory Committees are going to need to be staff-supported, just like all the other committees, and relative to where it lands in a department, I'm assuming that that staff will do so. Planning Department's happy to do it for any of them, but, you know, some of the processes coming up are the parks master plan, there could be airport planning, there could be, you know, transportation planning. So that would be a discussion internally as to who serves best as staff in the role.
Does the council feel like there's clear lines between the responsibilities of this committee and the Planning Commission? Do we know when something's going to go to this committee, rather than, I mean, the Planning Commission's is usually permits and things like that, but...
I would assume that this is going to be project-driven, pretty much, and so...
Preliminary, even to Planning Commission.
They would kind of follow that.
Yeah, I think that, one question, one other question I had was, the, you mentioned the intimidation factor, which it is real, and it exists on stepping up here and being interviewed for a committee. And especially with youth and others who, you know, we've got a TV camera right on them. It is intimidating. If that was taken out of the mix, as far as appointment to the committee, that would simplify and streamline and add for a robust involvement. I like that word, robust. So I like that part of it, and it would help us out here, too, and get more people willing to step up. It's been your experience in Redmond, which I feel is good.
I would just add, trying to be really flexible on when they meet, I think that's going to be a real problem for diverse groups such as this. Having it in the middle of the day could exclude some people, so just being really sensitive to that, and that could add additional, maybe flexing times of the staff in order to staff those meetings. But I think that's something to be considered. I am really supportive of this. I've dealt with similar committees in my functions with the state, and it's, it's so interesting to be able to have a diverse group. And when they don't get along, as far as agreeing on a subject, is when you probably learn the most. When everything's very homogeneous and everything kind of jives, it doesn't, you don't always learn as much from that. And I can think many times where we put an issue out on the table, and we have an advisory committee that works for the Insurance Commissioners Office, it's made up of insurance companies, insurance agents, and consumer representatives. And they don't always see it eye to eye. I mean, especially in legislature, they're often combating each other. But to put an issue out on the table and watch them debate as regulators, you just learn so much. And it's difficult to get all those perspectives there and to keep them interested. But by keeping, I think by having it specific to projects, your chances of getting people who are interested and engaged is even better. Otherwise, it might not be interesting to them, so they just won't show up. But making it, always making it relevant to the committee, and having that committee be pretty flexible with membership, I think, and being able to quickly fill positions without having to come to us for an interview, I think is really good, too. So having it be easily mobilized and diverse is, I'm completely on board. So do we need any, do you have anything else?
Well, I was just saying, is the next thing, then do we direct staff to come back with that comprehensive plan? And the wording that would be for the amendment?
That's what she's asking.
Yeah, so if that's, if the direction of city council is to move forward with this recommendation, we'll initiate a public process for that. So we would get the word out about it, it would go through Planning Commission, because it's a comprehensive plan, text amendment, go through the Planning Commission, they would vote on a recommendation to you, and then it would come up to you as city council.
Okay. Do we need a recommendation?
Yeah, so I'd say, under our planning ordinance, the council can initiate a comprehensive plan amendment or text amendment to the zoning code. So that's what we're asking tonight, is a motion to initiate that process, and then allow to let Heather start the public process at the Planning Commission level.
I move to initiate the process of redefining our Citizens Advisory Committee to the ad hoc committees as described in this report.
Here's going to have to flip for it. We have a motion by Councilor Drapkin, and a second by Councilor Yoder Rudin. You weren't even in on that one. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather.
Good stuff.
Yeah, I mean, you could take... Yeah, I mean, you, you could take that testimony now, but there'll, there'll be a public hearing process that will start at the planning commission level before anything comes back here.
Okay. Just, if anyone is interested in commenting on this action, just wanted to let you know, this, there's gonna be, this is gonna engage, trigger a public comment, a public hearing, and we would expect that you would provide comment at that time to the planning commission and when it comes before us, to us as well. So, thank you. All right, we have a number of resolutions. Let me just jump in here. All right, so moving into resolutions, we have resolution number 2016-76, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2016. This is in reference to the PRRS, action that we've already taken.
Transitional liability.
Transitional liability. So, Marsha, do you want to give us any other feedback on that?
No, I really don't have anything to add. Just pointing out again that, as it states in the resolution, that the net present value savings of refinancing this PRRS debt is expected to be about $950,000 over the next 10 years.
Yeah.
Terrific.
Nice job. Okay, I will entertain a motion that we adopt.
I second.
Resolution, we have a motion by Council Menke, second by Councilor Rudin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Resolution passes. Resolution 2016-77, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2016, 2017 budget and authorizing expenditures of grant funds. Chief.
Council President Jeffries and councilors, in the late winter of this last, this last winter, we retired, for lack of a better term, a 1982 fire truck due to mechanical issues. It was the rural district fire truck specifically that we used for rural areas, carrying water specific to those areas and with off-road accessibility. Once that was retired, we basically have a fleet of, of city fire trucks that are very capable of doing the job here in the city, but they might not be so well in the field fires or up in the rural areas off-road as that unit was. As you're aware, we're in contract with the McMinnville Rural Fire Protection District for fire protection services. And while that truck that we retired was a city asset that the city purchased back in 1982, the rural district was made aware of our issues and our unbudgeted, the ability because of the lack of budget for a replacement vehicle for that area. They've authorized up to $140,000 for the replacement of that vehicle. And we believe, given the, much like the tender that we just purchased last year with their financial assistance, that $140,000 will be able to get a, a good quality reconditioned engine that will provide their service well into the future. And, and they're authorizing up to $140,000 for the purchase of that vehicle. So, 140 of the $163,000 amended is for the fire department, is for the revenues and purchases of that vehicle. And $23,000 is a grant application that we received from FEMA. Doug Cummins, our emergency management coordinator, was, applied for and was awarded the, a third of three community emergency response trailers with equipment. And there's a $23,000 revenue and purchase that will be required to fund that third trailer for our CIRC teams here in McMinnville.
All right, thanks. Any questions? Just one, is, is the equipment that we're buying for the, for the rural fire, is this an gallons or improvement, a significant improvement to the vehicle delivery, like the product delivery to the customer?
It's, it, it's an increased water supply carried on the engine and increased ground clearance. The vehicles that we have are relatively low ground clearance, and they all carry about 750 gallons of water. We have such fantastic water supply here in the city limits that, that's, we can get an initial fire attack and, and still a plenty of time, and the hydrants are just fabulous here in the city limits. When we get in the rural district, we're gonna be going up to about 1,000 gallons of water in addition to the two tenders. So, that'll give us a sustainable water for fire suppression in the rural areas where there are no hydrants.
Do you know if this could lower any ISO ratings, having a, something of this size?
It won't impact the ISO ratings in the rural district. Because we're replacing a vehicle that was already there of the same capacity.
Even, oh, the same capacity, okay.
Correct.
Correct. All right, thanks. All right, I will, yes.
Yes, I had, chief, you mentioned the lift on the...
Yes, sir.
What, is that for off-road capability, more increased, close to the target?
Correct.
Being off pavement?
Yeah, our, our vehicle, ground clearance is of concern when we're in the rural areas. We have a lot of driveways with angles of departures and, and approaches that are, while we have a, a limited amount of say on, on new construction, some of the old construction ground clearances or driveway clearances are, are difficult. We also use it in wildland and field fires, so we try and get off-road, and we want to have the ability to get off-road and pump and roll with it as much as possible. So, when we get into those field fires, even like, like last summer in, up on Grand Haven area, where we had that field fire right, we, standing grain fire right next to Grand Haven there, we were using vehicles off-road chasing the fire down the agricultural fields. So, it, it gives us a, a capacity of not only in the forestry area, but in the ag areas as well as into the rural driveways.
Thank you.
All right, so other questions? I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor...
Second.
Counselor Hill and a second by Counselor Menke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I said aye. Nay, or, sorry, I gotta get my brain straight. I say aye. I get to vote. I forgot to do that. So, aye.
Please start.
We're gonna move on. The resolution passes. And next up, we have resolution 2016-78, a resolution approving funding agreement with McMinnville Rural Fire Protection District for the purchase of rural fire protection engine.
Counselor Jeffries and councilors, this, this resolution just authorizes myself to enter into the contract with the rural district to, to get the funds and purchase the equipment.
All right.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion by Council Drapkin and a second by Councilor Yoder. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 2016-79, a resolution approving an interim city manager employment agreement. You want to give that one?
Sure. We discussed briefly in the dinner meeting tonight that there is one change to the employment agreement from what was presented in the council packet, and that is to delete paragraph in section 7D. Other than that, the proposed employment agreement is as presented, has been cleared through finance, payroll, and Candace has graciously agreed to it as well. If it's the council's pleasure to enter into this employment agreement with her, it is retroactive to October 3rd, which was her first day, has a finite end date of March 31st, 2017, depending on what happens with the, the recruitment of a, of a new city manager. But she's agreed to stay at least that long.
Well, thank you.
At least.
Yeah. All right, so with that, with that, I guess there hasn't been an amendment, it's just different from what's in the packet.
It's different from what's in the packet, so...
I want to change the motion.
So moved.
Give a...
Second.
Motion by Council Drapkin and a second by Councilor Rudin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The resolution passes.
Sorry.
We got through that. So, that'll take us to advice and information items. Any, any advice or information around the council?
Yes, I have something that I'd like to present to the council. Pardon me, just pull up my notes here. I want to first start by restating, as I said to you early, Kevin, earlier, Kevin, that I think that you're a great city councillor, and I very much enjoy my service with you here. That said, I see your application for city manager as problematic. I do not think that your work on the PIP or in the review process was at all tainted by a desire to become city manager. However, you did serve on the subcommittees that produced those documents, which ultimately resulted in the resignation of the former city manager. Both you and Candace acknowledged in the newspaper that a resulting hire of Counselor Jeffries could be problematic in terms of public perception. And, as I said earlier, what wasn't said was that the other candidates, other potential candidates may be dissuaded from applying, seeing you as a shoe-in, and that the hiring process was a mere formality. The resulting hire stands to undermine the citizens' trust in city government, and this is a problem that the city of McMinnville does not need. Many of the people up here have spent many years building public trust, and that should not be jeopardized. This council in the past has worked very hard to have an enviable position among governments, and we should continue to show the public that we are trustworthy. And with all of that said, I do not believe that you should apply for the city manager position. Additionally, I would like to address the timing of hiring of the new city manager. We have received communication from PROMP that this is a bad time to hire, that heading into the holidays, many people are not looking to change positions at that time, that people are not want to switch careers or possibly move cities just shy of the holidays. And my concern with that, while this council has worked hard to get the process moving to not abut the holidays too much, my concern with that is that if we rush into the hiring process, we may not get the broad spectrum of applicants that we would if we waited until the new year. And I believe that it is worth it to our citizens that we do all we can to get the best pool of applicants as we look to hire a new city manager.
Thank you, Counselor. I know you've put a lot of thought into that, and I, I know your heart's in the right place, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Kevin.
Thanks. Anything else? Larry, how's things going with Parkway?
Well, we had a meeting this last week, and one of the things that I'd just like to point out is that ODOT has agreed to proceed with, to begin negotiating purchase of the, of additional property for the, the next phase up the top of the Rex Hill, which is something that we really had to twist their arm to get them started. So, they are gonna start working on that to get the property purchased before the Worth family starts selling it to other businesses and buildings go up, and then we have to buy it with the building on. So, that's, that's been initiated. How soon it starts, I don't know. The other thing I'd just like to point out is that the bypass is supposed to be open a year from now, but we have chosen as a committee, we voted at our last meeting, to, we want to be the, to have a, a really formal grand opening ceremony for this, because it's been a huge project. And we would prefer that we take the lead as the local unit rather than letting ODOT plan our grand opening ceremonies. We will work in conjunction with the, with ODOT, but there's been so much local involvement and push and, and hours have been put into this whole thing to get it even moving and to get fin, help get financing and lobbying and the whole bit, that we really feel that the locals need to be involved in the planning of this and to be honored properly. So, that, we're starting now, thinking about that, even though it's a year away. So, I bring that up to throw it out, that if anybody would like to be involved in that planning, let me know. I know that, you know, Spirit Mountain is a huge, they do a fantastic job of putting on promotions, and they have, they have people on staff who that's all they do. And, and of course, Spirit Mountain is heavily involved in this, and they plan on having a huge presence, and they have, they have offered their staff to lead this. And so, but if anybody else, but we, we'd like to have representatives from, whether it's Chamber or, you know, or whatever council in the different communities to, to rerepresent it, too. So, if you know someone, or if you'd like to be involved, well, let me know, and I'll get you in touch with the right people to, to begin this planning process, which will take place hopefully in October of next year.
Exciting. Counselor Menke.
Well, Wycom is moving their meeting to the second Tuesday of the month.
Turn your mic, huh?
Sorry. Wycom is moving their meeting to the second Tuesday of the month. I understand we're discussing some promotions and some other things at that particular meeting, and I looked at the budget information, and I might have misclassified one of our payments somewhere else, but other than that, things are going well.
All right, great.
Ellen. There's a, I've got a few things, actually. There's an airport commission meeting, I believe, November 1st.
Okay.
There's also a committee for the task force, the affordable housing task force, coming up on 28.
28?
No, it's tomorrow, I think.
Tomorrow at 10:00 a.m.
Tomorrow.
And we will be due to talk about the 10-year versus the five-year portion of the...
Yeah, 10:00 a.m.
Sorry, I can't tell if it's based on one.
No, I knew it was coming up. Also, there's been talk about a, a grand, grand start of the Alpine Avenue improvement and ceremony, celebration of that part of what we've been involved in, urban renewal, Northeast Gateway Project, transportation bond, bond passage and implementation. Is there any word coming down from what we, what the city can expect on that? That, for you, Mike, or...
Sure. Our bid opening for the project is on Thursday, and so we're hoping for good numbers and hoping to bring good bid award results to you at your next meeting. We've had a number of discussions regarding a grand opening ceremony and believe that the awarded contractor will be a big part of that. So, we're waiting until we find out who the contractor is. I've had discussions with our design team, have had internal discussions. We have your feedback from your last meeting, and so we're gonna make sure that happens and that we get the word out and have a, have a nice event, so.
So, the, the bid day is, you say Thursday this week?
Mm-hmm.
So, would that be up, on the planning commission or city council docket that next month?
For the 8th of November. We're assuming bids are good, and we are able to advance a bid award recommendation to you. Our plan would be to do that on November 8th, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Remy? Counselor Hill?
We had, last Wednesday, the 19th, a Visit McMinnville board meeting, and we had an opportunity to go over financials. We had a report on our public relations, the social media and website reporting, and we're tracking hits on the webpage, Facebook, Twitter, all of those types of things, and we're having, we're having very good growth in all of those categories, well ahead of our expectation for where we're sitting right now. We have a, we have created a, a group that's outside of Visit McMinnville called Wayfinding, and this group is coming together to address signage in the community. And their, how complete it is, how seamless it works in, and how good it is to getting you to where you need to go. I had an opportunity on vacation to drive up the Outer Bank a week before the hurricane, and they had some phenomenal wayfinding signs that are very colorful, that let you know that you were on the road the whole time.
that you were on the road the whole time, but if there was a lighthouse right over here, or a museum over here, or this or that. And so I brought back pictures of that. We have a company out of Sheridan that is, that is nationally recognized for their work. And so we were to have had a meeting Monday morning, but both Kitry and Jeff were sick, and so we'll be meeting in two more weeks. But the intent is to start the process of putting together a cost analysis of what it may look like for downtown and Alpine Avenue, but then also step out and what we could do to enclose the whole city in this process. So more to come from that perspective. We had an opportunity...
That topic, sorry. The Salem Downtown area has great signage as well, whether you're on a bike or a car or on a, you know, walking, how long it's going to take to get to different locations.
Okay.
It's a really neat system. Just walk around, like around the Capitol and courthouse and that part of it, they're really neat.
Good, good. Well, more to come. We just started, and Jeff Ladine and Rob Stevenson is taking that group and moving forward, and there's many, there's a couple of people off of the Visit McMinnville, but we've even reached out to citizens and those that would like to have some other input. We had an opportunity to look at a video presentation, a BlueChalk brand has come in and taken, like, just all kinds of video shots that are high quality that we're going to be able to use for the Four Seasons. And so they've put together the one for the fall, and we were able to look at that, a 30-second spot, and it brings the food and the wine in, but it also, we saw one that can get very specific to downtown. We just had, just some other things that we were looking at is how we can involve ourselves a little bit with cycling research. We know that out in wine country, cyclists like to come out, and so we're looking at how we can involve them. We're looking at, now that we're getting into the rainy season, we've purchased 100 umbrellas that we're going to put through the downtown area, and if it's raining, you can pick up an umbrella, borrow it, and it has Visit McMinnville on, and then near your car, you can drop it off and then go up to your car.
Do you think it's kept inside the stores?
Yeah, they will be kept inside the stores, and the intent is, we know we're going to probably have some theft, but it's branded, so anyone that uses it will be using the Visit McMinnville. Lot of good work going on. We're still very engaged, and if I'm not mistaken, they're planning on coming sometime in November to make their presentation to us as a council.
Great.
And then I missed, I missed the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee meeting, being on vacation, but we'll be meeting next week.
And the mayor's ball meets tomorrow as well, right?
That's right. Kids on the block.
For me, the council of governments has set out a survey, and I think you sent it out to the rest of the council, correct, about the local county, city and county dinners?
I did.
You did.
I forwarded it.
You did.
I forwarded it.
Nice job. It only takes about two minutes, and I think it's really good, yeah.
So could you, I had a question I didn't ask Candace. Now, is that our city-county dinners?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'll address it and get that.
Yeah, you know, trying to be more collaborative and using those rather than just raffles and dinner, but to, you know, have it be more collaborative and conversations about what's going on in the cities. So get that in as soon as you can. Like I said, it only took me about two minutes to get through it, and I am a slow reader, so it'll be good, so. With that, oh. Matt, do you got anything?
Yeah, just real quick, in January, I reported that during a PD presentation that we're going to be doing a gang awareness presentation session with Unidos, and that happened on the 12th, was well attended, was well received with partnering with that alert team and then also local partners. So I want to report that that was completed. We're in the midst of, obviously, some recruitment, and I'm happy to report, I know the council's big with the volunteerism. We've added four volunteers this last month, and then in addition, two to three reserve officers are in the midst of coming on board, which is exciting. We haven't had that much reserves movement in a while. And then lastly, I attended IACP conferences last week in San Diego, luckily. You know, I gather from attending that, I think, I wanted to share that, I think McMinnville, our police department and the local government countywide is in good position with reference to President Obama's 21st century policing model, where we're doing, I think, some significant outreach with our communities, and, which was one of the pillars that they were talking about, and we're also, I think, ahead of the curve with reference some collaboration with Health and Human Services with the mental health issues that are going across the country. So I just wanted to say that, that's some things I took back from San Diego, and I think we're in a really, really good position right now locally with those two pillars of where we need to be, so that's all.
On the issue of the recruitment, I know in years past that you've expressed some concern that the makeup of the police department doesn't reflect the diversity of the community as much as it probably could. Are you seeing any improvements in that as far as the recruiting pool at least?
The recruitment pool that I've seen didn't reflect the demographics that we thought. We've talked internally about doing some different things. I met with, again, Unidos on Saturday. We talked a little bit about partnering and, again, continuing to engage the Latino population with feeling comfortable coming into policing.
Yeah.
But we have not, but we've talked about doing some more outreach at the community camp, community college campuses, and obviously Western's a large pool of potential applicants too. So we're going to probably see a recruitment change in how we're going about soliciting people.
Thanks. Rich, you got anything? All right. Marcia. Heather, anything else? Mike? No, we're good, okay. Do you have anything for us?
Indians are still up 3-0 at the top of the eighth.
Okay.
I have one thing.
Yes.
Surveys are out, and if you received a survey, please fill it out and get it in. Once again, for the third time, I got a survey.
So did my wife. Yeah.
When did it come? Today or...
Oh, no, I've had it for about a month now.
They must have missed my tweet.
I just looked at that and thought, well, maybe I should take it over to Scott and let him fill it out this time.
Yeah, I would have, yeah. We would have pulled out of the universe of that, but my wife has opinions too.
Please fill out your, if you've got a survey, please fill it out and send it in. We want to know what you think.
What's the deadline for those to be returned?
It's got to be right away.
And there's a second mailing that's going out?
No, the second mailing's already gone out.
Oh, okay.
So it's got to be closing fairly soon.
Okay.
I think near the end of this month.
Okay.
So, did they have any...
Get your ballots in, get that in.
Any application, any of those questionnaires that were just situated around town, so people, other people could actually pick them up and fill them out?
I think there is option to do that online.
Yeah. Speaking of surveys, we have our ballots, they've been mailed out, get them in, and my experience in working in politics, the organizations that are calling and polling you, they get information from the Secretary of State's office, and so if you haven't voted yet, they're going to continue to bug you to try to get your vote. So if you get your ballot in, the calls will stop significantly. I'm not going to guarantee they're all going to stop, but you'll see a dramatic decrease in the number of calls, so. Vote early, vote often, right? Just once? Just once. Candace, do you have anything? All right, we are adjourned. Sir, I've got some things for you to sign. You have to use the...